Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. Hope today is a great day. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can be also found on P H L Council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call a roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance will please indicate by saying present or whatever you so may choose to make sure that your image on your screen will be displayed. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I am present. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Brooks.
So, Mr. Decker, Councilwoman Brooks won't be here today.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gautier.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues and the public president.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Had some challenges logging in this morning, so I shouldn't have missed the Philly sports talk. I'm sure it was riveting.
Yeah, abbreviated.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, Council President and good morning, colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm calling for justice for all our young people who are lost their lives to senseless gun violence.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and good morning viewing public.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues and to the viewing public.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Scola.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, present.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public.
Good morning, Councilman.
Council President Clark.
Good morning to everyone. We have established a quorum and council will now come to order. But to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Larry Carroll of Crosswords Evangelistic Church. She is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your head for the invocation. Pastor, please proceed. Pastor, connected?
Yes, I'm connected now. Thank you very much. Sorry, sorry we got disconnected.
Please proceed, Pastor.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for allowing me to be with you all today and thank you especially to Councilwoman Cindy Bass for inviting me. At this time, I'd just like for us to look to the Lord. Father, we do thank you for who you are and we thank you, oh God, because you told us except you build the city. Those that labor, labor in vain. So, Lord, we come to you as a privilege today thanking you for this occasion. Thanking you, Father, because you have said to us, do not forsake your law, but to keep your law in our hearts. And that's what we desire to do today. We do not want you to have mercy and your grace to ever depart from us. We are mindful of how much we need you and so we come today thanking you. Thanking you, Father, that you promise your favor upon us as we seek your face. You told us to trust in you with all our hearts and lean not into our own understanding. But in all of our ways, if we would but just acknowledge you, you will direct our path. So, we thank you. So, we acknowledge you right now. We acknowledge you, Father, during these financial challenges. We acknowledge, Lord, that you are our soul provider. We acknowledge you, Lord, during these physical times of upheaval, oh God. We acknowledge, oh God, that many have suffered the loss of loved ones through COVID and other diseases. And so, we acknowledge you as our great physician that you are. We acknowledge you, oh God, that we need you intellectually, oh God. You said, oh God, that your word would be a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our pathway. You are the wisdom of all the ages. So, we come to you. We also acknowledge you, Lord, for relationships. You have declared, oh God, that we are to love you with all our hearts, all our souls, all our minds, oh God, and even with all our strength. But also to love our neighbors even as we love ourselves. And so, Lord, we ask for, in Jesus's name, Lord, we ask that you would be our prince of peace. We ask, Lord, that you would build the relationships with our cities, oh God. We acknowledge you spiritually, oh Father. We acknowledge, oh God, that if your people which are called by your name would humble ourselves and pray and seek your face, you promised, oh God, that you would heal our land, forgive our sins. So, thank you now for this time. Thank you for the wisdom that you've given City Council. Thank you for the wisdom that you've given to our mayor. Father, thank you for the promise, Lord, that you promised to fill us with every good and perfect gift. We thank you right now for it. And we pray this all in the name of the one that's called wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father and the Prince of Peace. And to you we say amen.
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 Chair, thanks to Pastor for that indication and we really appreciate your spiritual guidance this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-one be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-one stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, aye, and our Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leaves of absence and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there is one request for a leave of absence today and that is for our council member Brooks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Leave will be granted for Councilwoman Brooks. Thank you. Our next order of business is communications. And, Mr. Decker, would you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession today?
From the mayor to the President to members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to sections four, six oh four and two, three oh seven of the Home Code and today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers two zero zero three four eight, two zero zero seven one seven, two one zero two zero four, two one zero two zero seven, two one zero two two five, two one zero two two eight, two one zero two four six, two one zero two four seven, and two one zero two eight one. And I am pleased to advise you that on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at a session on April eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Bill numbers two one zero 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 one, two one zero 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 two, two one zero zero seven nine, two one zero one one eight, two one zero one one nine, two one zero one three six, two one zero one three seven, two one zero one seven eight, two one zero one seven nine, and two one zero one eight zero. And I am pleased and I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal years two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two pursuant to bill number one seven zero two zero six. And a resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-six and incorporating revised changes with respect to fiscal year two thousand twenty-one which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority. And an ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-seven inclusive. And an ordinance to adopt the fiscal two thousand twenty-two capital budget. And an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by revising certain tax rates. And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen fifteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Community Development Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund and the Community Development Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I would like to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, can you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Parker offers five bills and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-seven inclusive. And an ordinance to adopt a fiscal two thousand twenty-two capital budget. And an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by revising certain tax rates. And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen fifteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates.
Thank you. Those five bills will be referred to the appropriate committees.
Also, on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal years two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two pursuant to bill number one seven zero two zero six.
For the committee.
And a resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-six and incorporating revised changes with respect to fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
For the committee.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Frank and on her own behalf, a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Frank L. Stevens, Jr. and recognizing his work at the Free Library of Philadelphia and his dedication to elevating black art and stories.
Thank you. Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers three resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment and the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to conduct joint hearings on building decarbonization in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing community garden leaders for their stewardship and service on the occasion of Earth Day in two thousand twenty-one.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution calling on the City of Philadelphia Office of Fleet Management to develop and execute a request for proposals for additional electric vehicles and charging station infrastructure for such vehicles in the City of Philadelphia's fleet.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one as Earth Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and thanking the Philadelphia Energy Authority for its solar savings grant program.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers three bills and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending title twenty-two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by modifying the circumstances when certain City of Philadelphia employers are entitled to service connected death benefits during the pandemic.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and towaway zone regulations on both sides of Sackett Street from Cotman Avenue to Ryan Avenue.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and towaway zone regulations on both sides of St. Vincent's Street from Sackett Street to Hawthorne Street.
For the committee.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Donald McRogan and recognizing his lifelong dedication to family, friends, and advancing the labor movement in of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Canona Sanchez offers on behalf of Council President Clark, one bill entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Community Development Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Community Development Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
For the committee.
Councilwoman Brooks offers two bills and entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine, eleven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination. To require the use and disclosure of uniform screening criteria for rental housing and certain related disclosures to prospective rental housing applicants and to provide that the failure to provide such disclosures may be evidence of other unlawful housing and real property practices.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter nine, eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant by adding a new section nine, eight, ten, entitled Perspective Tenant Screening Practices to regulate the application and selection process for housing units and make technical changes.
For the committee.
Councilwoman Gautier offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Gautier offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing Neighborhood Development of the Homeless to hold hearings to determine how the City of Philadelphia should best use the one-time opportunity to create permanent solutions to homelessness arising as a result of Philadelphia's allocation of forty-two million dollars through the American Rescue Plan in support of affordable housing and homelessness assistance.
This week's calendar.
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Gautier offers a resolution standing in solidarity with residents of St. Vincent and the Grenadines in the midst of repeated eruptions of La Sufrere volcano and encouraging Philadelphians to offer their support in whatever ways they can.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to take a moment to discuss one of the resolutions that I introduced today which expresses support and concern for the residents of St. Vincent and the Grenadines who are currently living through an environmental emergency. The La Sufrere volcano, which had been dormant for forty years, began showing signs of activity back in December. On Friday of last week, it erupted and has been erupting regularly since, releasing massive amounts of smoke and ash into the air. Experts warned that these explosions could continue for days and possibly weeks. This is creating massive challenges for the country. Crops are being wiped out, which leads to both economic and food availability concerns. Electricity is limited. Water and medical supplies are running low. At a time when hospitals are already straining from the burden of COVID- nineteen, they are now also receiving an influx of patients who are suffering from the effects of smoke and ash inhalation. This is personal for me and my family. My mother and her siblings were born and raised in St. Vincent and immigrated to the U.S. as teenagers and young adults. This is also personal for the over seventy-four thousand Caribbean immigrants living in Philadelphia today. All of us are concerned about our relatives and loved ones in our home countries and we want to see them remain healthy and safe. Government officials have been working hard to evacuate residents from the most dangerous areas surrounding the volcano. But there are still many thousands of people who remain at risk. Neighboring countries and international entities like the World Bank have stepped up and stepped in to support the relief effort. And I also want to let Philadelphians know that there are a variety of ways that you can support too. Whether by donating money, sending supplies, or sharing information on this disaster with family and friends through your networks. Please visit me at Councilmember JG on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram to find out more about how you can assist. This is a very tragic situation and I hope and pray that St. Vincent and all of his people come out of this healthy and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That'll be on next week's calendar. Um, Councilman, go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilman Thomas offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending title six of the Philadelphia Code, the Health Code, to add a section establishing reporting requirement, reporting unemployment requirements related to changes in ownership or of the license holder of long-term care facilities and hospitals.
For the committee.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the M. Hotep Charter Boys Basketball Team on their successful two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one season and overall undefeated record in the Philadelphia Public League Boys Basketball Championships.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to all of the cosponsors for this important legislation as it relates to supporting our healthcare workers in the healthcare industry. What we are trying to do, what we feel like we're trying to do is something that's significant, not just to the industry but to the constituents of Philadelphia who rely on this industry to provide a quality living for themselves and their family. In the midst of the economy that we're in right now and the levels of uncertainties that we're seeing, we need to put ourself in a position where we are protecting our most vulnerable. So, this is what we are trying to do with this legislation. Again, I want to thank all of my cosponsors for agreeing to cosponsor this bill and I look forward to engaging the public as well as my colleagues. I want this important legislation, this is something that I feel like we must get done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That resolution will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Scola offers three bills entitled an ordinance amending title nine of the Philadelphia Code by amending section nine, two oh three related to street vendors by prohibiting street vending on certain portions of East Passyunk Avenue and surrounding areas. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Greenwood Street and Second Street, Reed Street and South Ford Street, Moore Mansing Avenue and Wharton Street. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Moore Street and South Second Street.
Those two bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring one million black women, an initiative launched by Goldman Sachs, black women-led organizations and other partners, which will commit ten million dollars in direct investment capital and one hundred million dollars in philanthropic support to address gender and racial biases black women have faced for generations.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution calling on the National Collegiate Athletic Association to reevaluate its policies and practices related to gender equity and to implement steps to close gender gaps in all sports and divisions.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions and our next order of business is the report from committee and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez for reporting the committee on appropriations. Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Canona Sanchez, the Committee on Appropriations reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President, the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Appropriations to which was referred bill number two one zero two two six entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions for the purpose of further implementing council's new normal jobs initiative and adjusting council's internal appropriations. Respectfully reported as considered and amended the same, I returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on behalf of Councilmember Canona Sanchez, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number two one zero two two six. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number two one zero two two six. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our report from committee and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. Two one zero two nine six, two one zero two nine seven, two one zero two nine eight, two one zero three zero zero, two one zero three zero one, two one zero three seven two, two one zero three zero two, two one zero three zero three, two one zero three zero four, two one zero three zero five, two one zero three zero six, two one zero three zero seven, two one zero three one zero, two one zero three one one, two one zero three one two, two one zero three one three, two one zero three one four, and two one zero three one five. Second.
Council President.
Yeah. Chair recognizes Councilman Green. I thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. With regards to the consent agenda, request that bill number, resolution number two one zero three oh three not be included on the consent agenda and put on today's second reading and final passage agenda so I can make a motion to pass that resolution at that time.
Thank you, Councilman. As a part of the consent agenda process, without consent, that is removed from the consent agenda. Without objection. Thank you. That shall be on the final passes regular session today. Thank you, Councilman. There was a motion and it was seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye, and the motion carries to move will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers two one zero two nine nine, two one zero zero seven eight dash A, two one zero one three five dash A, two zero zero one eight nine, and two one zero one three nine. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I believe per Councilman Green's, our request, we will add three oh three.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, with the addition of resolution number two one zero three zero three.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Before we proceed with to consider the consideration of the public comment, I want to take a brief five-minute to allow our technology professionals to connect with our individuals who wish to testify today. Also, we'll take a brief five to ten-minute recess. Thank you very much. We're back live. So, now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider public comment and it will go as follows. The public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at the session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two one five six eight six three four oh six by three P.M. the day before the council session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation and add your name to the list. We will then telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, we will have three minutes, but we have a relatively lengthy list of individuals testifying today. So, today's time limit will be two minutes. So, please adjust your testimony to reflect the time issue. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time. Once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right to visit, to limit the number of speakers where repetitions comments being made on the same subject matter, and to limit the scope of the testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks for public comment at the meeting. And please be aware that this is a public meeting and is being recorded. Because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation on privacy. So by continuing to be in this meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask Mr. Decker to please call the first name of our first speaker.
The first speaker is Tiffany Green, commenting on 210078A.
Good morning, and state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. Good morning, Tiffany Green. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I want to oppose Bill 210078, this 30-page zoning bill. I'm asking for the residents that I have worked with and represent that we be exempt from this bill. This, this is the removal of our rights. This is a rezoning bill that's had no community meetings, no community information on the effects of this bill, which will have, we feel will have a detrimental impact on our community. This rezoning turns into a buy right, which means the developer can bypass the community. That means there's no community process, and we feel that this is totally cutting out the community. Although this bill only touches on the Ninth District and the Fifth District and the Eighth District, I have called some of my colleagues in the Fifth District, they know nothing about this bill. And in the RSA Five District in this bill, and I'm saying to city council, how can you do this to Philadelphia citizens? You're saying that if someone has a 1440 square foot property, that you're allowing developers to put two dwellings on one property. That means the developer will charge, they've already done it in our area once, $400,000 for one building and $400,000 for another building, that's $800,000. That will increase the rent in the area, it will increase the tax assessments, it will take away the character of the block. Philadelphia citizens have the right to have a community process and have a say. You're by using this in the Ninth and Eighth District, and I'm sure, I'm not sure if it's in our district because the bill was confusing, but you're saying to us that we should not have a community process and a vote on this. Also, you have to hear about the setbacks from eight feet to five feet, and also about the solar. We're saying at this particular point that this rezoning bill is turning into a Jim Crow type of bill. You're putting us on the back of the bus, and you're taking us, and you're saying that we don't count. And because of that, we can no longer continue on to have you rezoning these bills and that removing the community process. We are entitled to a vote and a community process. And city council, for between majority African Americans, how can you do this to the black community? How can you sit up here and put us on the back of the bus and say we should not have a vote and have the developer come to the other community and vote on the process? If you vote on this bill, you are removing the rights of Philadelphia citizens. That means healthcare workers, retail workers, hotel workers, working poor people, you're saying they don't have a right to come to the table and vote on a development in their community. Do the right thing, and vote, vote this bill through.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. Mr. Decker, next speaker.
The next speaker is Joseph Pierce, commenting on 210303.
Good morning. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Pierce. Thank you, Council President. I'm Director of Government Relations and Advocacy for Mental Health Partnerships based in Philadelphia. I'm speaking on behalf of our President and CEO, Dr. Adrian Torres O'Connor. I'd like to thank Councilman Derek Green for his ongoing support of Mental Health Partnerships, and for city council's recognition of our 70 years of service to the greater Philadelphia area. In the span of our 70-year history, Mental Health Partnerships has touched and transformed the lives of over half a million individuals struggling with mental health and addiction challenges in the city. Not only individuals, but families have been touched. Not only families, but communities have been affected. Our staff are amazingly dedicated people that are passionate about the work and about our participants. We thank city council, the administration, and the hardworking folks at DBH for your unwavering support of our efforts as we continue to meet the needs of those who are most vulnerable and at the greatest risk in our communities. Speaking on behalf of our entire staff and board of directors, we are exceptionally proud of and grateful for this special 70th anniversary recognition, and we look forward to another 70 years of serving this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it. Mr. Decker? Next name.
The next speaker is Janay Johns, commenting on 210296.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Janay Johns, president and founder of Once Upon a Premie Academy. I'm calling in this morning in full support of Resolution 210296, the adoption of Philadelphia's Black Maternal Health Week 2021. As the mother of a preterm infant and the founder of the Health and Racial Equity Training Academy for perinatal and neonatal professionals, I believe it is our civic and professional duty to support the lives of black birthing women in the city of Philadelphia. We know that black women are 2.5 more times likely to die after pregnancy-related complications, and African-American women such as myself are 50% more likely to deliver their babies prematurely compared to their white counterparts. These alarming disparities based on race and ethnicity are completely avoidable and preventable. I would like to thank city council president and the cosponsors of this resolution and hope that we are able to adopt it to protect the lives of black birthing women in our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sherry Peddaway, commenting on 210296.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Chief Clerk, she is not on the line. The next two people are Holland and Gonzalez.
The next speaker is Portia Holland, commenting on 210296.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good morning. My name is Portia Holland. I am the founder and CEO of Reclaim Black Motherhood, a birth doula, lactation counselor, birth worker trainer, and mentor here in the city of Philadelphia. I'm the mother of a three-year-old child. I experienced a traumatic birth experience and was prompted to do this work to respond to the black maternal health crisis that black women face nationwide and particularly here in the city of Philadelphia. It's no question, it's no wonder about the statistics and the data that point to the ill treatment and the horrific birth and postpartum outcomes that black women face in this country and here in the city of Philadelphia included. It is a privilege and a right to be able to birth and build your family without the concern of death, of racist practices, and of being treated with harm and neglect while having the most beautiful experience that one should have. So I stand in full support of not only recognition but financial support, movement building around Black Maternal Health Week, so birth workers can be placed in positions to support black families through this process, so that families can have the financial right and obligation to quality health care from black providers, and also so that those in the medical system can be trained and forewarned about practices of bias and racism in this city and nationwide. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Alicia Gonzalez.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Alicia Gonzalez. I am responding in support to Resolution 210296. I am a birth doula and postpartum doula, and I am in full support due to the consistent needs that are in the black community, especially for black moms. We have the right to have the support that is needed. We have the right to be heard. In a lot of the medical facilities, we see a lack there with communication, and with the right to have all of the support that we need, all of the resources that we need in our community, even to the extent of postpartum, there's a lot of needs, and I feel that supporting this will be beneficial to the community and the moms that are present.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Katie Baker Cohen.
Good morning. Just say your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Chief Clerk, she is not on the line.
Okay, next name.
Eugene Dusyatnik.
Yes.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good morning. My name is Eugene Dusyatnik. I'm president of the Bellevous Neighbors Association, and I apologize for going out of order. I couldn't get on earlier. I'm here to testify in support of Bill Number 210135. Aside from a few pop-up performances in our arts, the curtain has remained largely closed on our arts and entertainment sector, which is continuing to suffer one of the more prolonged impacts of this pandemic. We've heard time and get, time and time again from Dr. Farley and others, that if we gather, do it outdoors. The risk of spread is much lower. That is the rationale for expanding outdoor dining, and today, I wanted to just applaud the efforts of the bill sponsors, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson and others to extend this lifetime, lifeline to additional sectors, help restaurants attract patrons, and provide a much-needed cultural experience to our residents, which can enrich and uplift us during this difficult time. Here in the, in the, in Bellevous and the Ninth Street Market, we have some great interest already among local artists such as Michelle Angela Ortiz to produce our markets, a multi-layered performance with classical music and images of immigrants in the market and honoring those who have passed away due to COVID. And performances like this are only possible thanks to having the space be available and having this be available to additional sectors as well. So we just wanted to appreciate this being extended to other sectors, and we welcome any other creative solutions to expand this opportunity for safer outdoor gatherings for, for, for other activities as well. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ben Telekia, commenting on 210135A.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Ben is not on the line. The next two are.
The next speaker is Michelle Histon, commenting on 210135.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Good morning, Michelle Histon. I am the Deputy Director of Ready Set Philly, which is a collaborative initiative between the city of Philadelphia, the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Philadelphia, and a broad and diverse coalition of organizations working together to provide information and direction to encourage the safe return to Philadelphia for work and play as vaccines roll out. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today on behalf of restaurants and businesses in the downtown core, which continue to struggle as a result of the pandemic. The future of many of the restaurants relies on people coming back to the city, and part of Ready Set Philly's role is to identify ways to attract workers back to their Philadelphia workplaces. So we are in support of Bill Number 210135 because we believe the city should keep streeteries and enhanced outdoor dining as long-term features. Outdoor dining will continue to be essential to the financial viability of restaurants. Reducing restrictions and fast-tracking permitting on sidewalk cafes, streeteries, and outdoor dining shellies is imperative to the survival. Additionally, investment in outdoor attractions and entertainment create buzz, drawing residents, those thinking of transitioning back to the workplace, and visitors to the city. Before the pandemic, our food scene was having a moment. We were named among the best in GQ, Forbes, Food &amp; Wine, Travel &amp; Leisure, Esquire. As we start to rebuild, we believe that through initiatives like those outlined in the outdoor entertainment bill, businesses and elected leaders can work together to ensure the city's restaurants regain their roles in our vibrant community and serve as catalysts to help jumpstart commerce. We want the city to become more livable for residents and more appealing to visitors. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Michael Numas, commenting on 210135A.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony. Thank you. My name is Michael Numas, Chief of Staff at Visit Philadelphia. On behalf of Visit Philadelphia, I'm so pleased to support the outdoor entertainment bill 210135. This bill will help our restaurant industry recover from the economic crisis. This creative solution will empower restaurants to drive sales and support jobs for Philadelphians. Prior to COVID, Philadelphia had more than 54,000 workers employed by food and beverage establishments. In fact, in January of 2020, more than 6,000 residents in each council district held family sustaining leisure and tourism hospitality jobs. This measure will also positively help animate Philadelphia. It's going to increase consumer foot traffic, supporting nearby retail shops, attractions, and other adjacent neighborhood businesses throughout commercial corridors in each of our, in each of our neighborhoods. Philadelphia's hospitality industry continues to be one of the hardest sectors by the pandemic. We want to thank Councilmember Richardson and others for their vision and introducing this bill, and Council President Clark and members of council, we all thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony, and we appreciate it.
I believe there are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, will you please now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution
Resolution Number 210296 entitled the resolution recognizing and supporting the health and wellness of black mothers and birthing people by acknowledging April 11 through 17, 2021, as Black Maternal Health Week. And Resolution Number 210297 entitled a resolution urging the United States Senate to pass Senate Bill 1306, the Protecting the Rights, the Right to Organize Act of 2019, also known as the PRO Act, and affirming the right of workers to form unions and organize for higher wages, family sustaining benefits, as well as safety, dignity, and respect at their workplace. And Resolution Number 210298 entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring James Harry Kalamia for his exceptional service to the Roxboro community as the Executive Director of the Roxboro Development Corporation. And Resolution Number 210300 entitled a resolution calling upon the United States Congress to support the Biden Administration's American Jobs Plan, a multi-trillion-dollar plan to invest in American infrastructure and jobs over the next eight years. And Resolution Number 210301 entitled a resolution recognizing April 2021 as Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia, and commending the Eagles Autism Foundation and Divine Providence Village for their vaccination initiative. And Resolution Number 210302 entitled a resolution recognizing and congratulating Gail Harity for her 24 years of dedicated, effective, and transformative leadership as President and Chief Operating Officer of the Philadelphia Museum of Art. And Resolution Number 210304 entitled a resolution, council calls on the Pennsylvania State Senate and House of Representatives to grant Philadelphia the ability to provide needed regulatory relief to local bars, restaurants, and other liquor licensees. Regulatory relief in the form of extended bar hours and increased happy hours will allow establishments hit hard by state and local coronavirus-related closures and capacity restrictions to make a full recovery and preserve thousands of local jobs. And Resolution Number 210305 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating the West Catholic Preparatory High School Girls Basketball Team, the Ladybirds, on winning the school's first-ever PIA double-A state title against Mohawk with a 67-56 victory. And Resolution Number 210306 entitled a resolution to bring to Philadelphia the main celebrations of the 250th anniversaries of the Navy and Marine Corps. And Resolution Number 210307 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 1824 East Tonton Street. And Resolution Number 210310 entitled a resolution recognizing April 24, 2021 as the 20th National Prescription Drug Take-Tack Day, to provide a safe and effective option for the disposal of unwanted, unused, or expired controlled substances, and to minimize the incidence of drug abuse and fatal overdoses in the city due to non-medical prescription drugs found in the homes of family and friends. And Resolution Number 210311. 210311 entitled the resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fee simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the Eighth Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to section 16405 of the Philadelphia Code. And resolution number 210312 entitled the resolution calling on the school district of Philadelphia to help combat Asian hate by providing Asian-American history lessons during Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in May to further educate and inform students of the rich history and contributions of Asian-Americans. And resolution number 210313 entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating Dr. Carmen Fibo, a longtime executive director of Talar Poteriquenyo, Inc., on the occasion of her upcoming retirement. And resolution number 210314 entitled the resolution honoring and recognizing Paul S. Bedman, the longtime president and CEO of Avenue of the Arts, Inc., for his years of service in strengthening Philadelphia's internationally recognized arts and culture scene upon the occasion of his upcoming retirement. And resolution number 210315 entitled the resolution recognizing QFlix Philadelphia, the largest LGBTQ+ film festival in the mid-Atlantic region, and its parent organization, QFlix USA, and calling on Facebook to unlock the organization's QFlix Worcester account, all under certain terms and conditions.
Is it, Mr. President? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda. I'm mute, Councilman Jones. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210299.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Keir Bradford-Grey for her outstanding, impactful, and incomparable service to city and its citizens as chief defender of the Defender's Association of Philadelphia, and congratulating her on her new role as partner at Montgomery, Moncraken, Walker, and Rhodes.
Here is now this Councilman Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I move this resolution, I'd like to say a few words. Every now and then, we are blessed to have someone come into come into our environment that is transformative. In the case of Keir Bradford-Grey, I think of Joel Embiid, who has changed.
It's a...
Yes.
Um, can the members, like, to not speak and please mute themselves, or whoever else is on, getting too much background noise going on. Sorry about that, Council.
That's all right. So transformative beings like Joel Embiid on the basketball court, or Mickey Guyton, who is now in country music space, getting ready to host the Country Music Awards, our version of that is Keir Bradford-Grey. She has taken a good organization, which is the Defenders Association, and enlightened us and risen its profile to a degree where we can't ignore it. And now, all too soon, she's spreading her wings and going into the private sector where she will, God willing, be successful. And with that, with some hesitation and reservation, I move for the adoption of this farewell resolution. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Procedurally, I'm supposed to act on that motion, but I know Councilman Thomas, I believe, wanted to say a couple of words. So I'm going to pray, Councilman Thomas. We can break the rules because we're virtual. Councilman Thomas, you had a couple of comments on this one?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I appreciate it. I just wanted to take a moment to, first of all, thank the sponsor of this resolution, because I know him and Keira have been working together for years. When you're talking about issues of criminal justice reform in the city of Philadelphia, they have partnered and been doing the work long before it was a thing that pulled high or was the popular thing to do. I often refer to Keir Bradford-Grey as the mother of the modern-day criminal justice reform movement that we see here in the city of Philadelphia, because when I know for me, a lot of the terms and different initiatives that we've seen, whether we're talking about cash bill or other initiatives that we now see have changed in the city of Philadelphia, they were first introduced to me by her, as I had never heard of such practices in theory. So I just appreciate her service to the city of Philadelphia. I appreciate her mentorship and leadership, and I look forward to supporting her in whatever next steps that she takes, because I know it will benefit us as a city. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Jones, not just for sponsoring the resolution, but for your continued work and advocacy as it relates to the criminal justice reform in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. I want to adjust my earlier statement. We are adjusting the rules, not breaking the rules. There was a motion and a second, all in favor of said resolution, indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210078A.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is shall the bill pass finally? Will Mr. Decker call a roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman... Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm? Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Councilwoman's having technical difficulty, Mr. Clerk.
Councilman Scola? Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. I believe we had two members not available and one member leave of absence.
Did you...? I'm sorry, Council President. Councilman Thomas said aye. Did you hear me?
Yeah, we... I think we have you. I think we did not hear Councilwoman Sanchez.
And Gimm.
And Councilwoman Gimm.
Council President, I am present.
You got you now? Okay.
Yeah, I'm here also. I'm here. I got back on.
Okay. I know I delayed long enough. We can get everybody on. Thank you. Ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members haven't voted in their firms to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210135.
We just learned, Mr. President, that that bill is being held.
Oh, okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 212... I'm sorry, 200189.
An ordinance amending chapter 161100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled nuisance health establishments by adding a definition for supervised injection sites, creating a presumption that they are nuisance health establishments and establishing criteria to obtain the support of the community by requiring a hearing before city council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion on the bill.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move that bill number 200189 be placed on the suspension calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and bill number 200189 will be placed on the suspension calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210139.
An ordinance amending chapter 19500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled taxes and rents general by adding required conditions and information for reporting adjustments to taxable income.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for an amendment to bill number 210139.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 210139. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and bill number 210139 has been amended. Bill number 210139 as amended will be placed on the final passes calendar for our next session of council. Mr. Decker, I think 303.
Resolution number 210303 entitled the resolution recognizing and celebrating Mental Health Partnerships on the 70th anniversary of the organization's founding.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to make this motion regarding this outstanding organization, Mental Health Partnerships, for their 70th anniversary. As many know, this month of April is also Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month, and one of the outstanding initiatives that Mental Health Partnerships has helped to steer is the Community Autism Peer Specialists Program. It's a program that allows those on autism spectrum to actually earn a wage and income, at the same time mentoring younger people on the autism spectrum. And Mental Health Partnerships has been able to partner with the Philadelphia Autism Project, Community Behavioral Health, and our city's department, Be Able to Help the Intellectual Disability Services. So this CAPS program has been a phenomenal program. It's now becoming an international model for a number of different jurisdictions, looking at how they can provide real opportunities for those on autism spectrum, not only to receive gainful employment, but also help the next generation of those on autism spectrum to become self-advocates. And I think this is a very outstanding example of the great work that Mental Health Partnerships has done over their 70 years. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of said resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment and the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to conduct joint hearings on building decarbonization in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson. Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson. Councilwoman...
The President, I move for the resolution now.
Second.
Moving properly seconded. All in favor of...
Can you hear me?
We have you now, Councilwoman. Thank you.
I can hear you now, Council Lady.
Um, this...
For the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold hearings to determine how the city of Philadelphia should best use the one-time opportunity to create permanent solutions to homelessness arising as a result of Philadelphia's allocation of $42 million to the American Rescue Plan in support of affordable housing and homelessness assistance introduced by Councilwoman Gautier on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the panel passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, that completes our calendar for today. Just want to say that we have a special presentation today, but the time has come for...
Mr. President, the sound went on mute.
Can you hear me now?
No, not... I can't hear you now, Mr. President.
Try it again.
I'm not sure if our colleagues, if they're hearing and I am not, but you can't... Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Council President.
We can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right. We're having a little drama today. All kinds of stuff.
Sometimes you go with it out.
All right, we're good now. Okay. The time has come for us to consider the mayor's presentation of his annual budget message. The Philadelphia Homer Charter states that the mayor shall submit to council no later than 90 days before the end of the fiscal year his operating budget message and proposed operating budget ordinance for the ensuing fiscal year. At the same time, the mayor shall submit to council a recommended capital program and capital budget as received from the city planning commission to the extent approved by the mayor. I will now ask for a brief recess to give our technology professionals time to cue up the mayor's budget message. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to have that brief as we cue the mayor's budget address. We will now consider the mayor's budget address.
Thank you, Council President Clark and members of city council for inviting me to speak to you today. As surreal as it is to be joining you virtually and not in council chambers, I am pleased to present our sixth proposed five-year financial plan covering fiscal years 2022 through 2026. Unlike the previous five, this plan comes in the wake of what many consider the most challenging year in Philadelphia's history. The combination of a global pandemic, a tumultuous presidential election, a worsening gun violence epidemic, and long overdue demands for racial justice have tested the resolve and resilience of every single Philadelphian. We've experienced a great deal of loss. We lost loved ones, many lost their jobs, and others lost businesses they worked years to build. But I, for one, have never lost hope, hope for our city's ability to rebound, hope for our capacity to overcome, and hope for an eventual return to all that makes Philadelphia great. I base this optimism on the strength and dedication I witnessed from the thousands of first responders and City of Philadelphia employees over the last year. We fed students and residents at hundreds of meal sites. We distributed PPE to frontline and essential workers. We kept residents from losing their homes. We opened our parks for record use of safe recreation. We supported local businesses with a focus on equity. We save lives by following the science and working from home. And along with many partners, we have administered a million doses of vaccine at over 250 sites citywide. I am incredibly proud that throughout the pandemic, our workforce responded with the tacitly and grace of true public servants, working incredibly hard to meet the changing needs of our residents. This plan builds on all of these efforts so that Philadelphians in every neighborhood can benefit from a strong inclusive recovery. Over the next five years, we will move Philadelphia forward by providing core services that people depend on, accelerating inclusive economic growth, maintaining the city's long-term fiscal health, and reducing racial disparities. As you can imagine, a significant part of our five-year plan is dependent on the estimated $1.4 billion in coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds we're slated to receive from the Biden administration's American Rescue Plan. This one-time federal relief will help ease the effects of projected revenue declines for business closures and changes to workplace occupancy that were necessary to slow the spread of the virus. To date, we have received over $800 million in federal, state, and local recovery funding to assist with new costs arising from the pandemic. And in addition to the $1.4 billion, we're anticipating that we will receive over $100 million more in targeted support through the American Rescue Plan, the only funding source that can be used to help with the revenue losses that we have sustained as a result of the pandemic. The American Rescue Plan will help fill a gap this fiscal year in our projected budget deficit resulting from the pandemic for the first four years of the plan. Equally important, it allows us to act on the harsh lessons from this crisis. For example, we know now more than ever that we must plan for future disruptions and build a resilient fund balance. This plan puts us on that path. And while one point four billion dollars sounds like and is substantial, it by no means fully meets our long-term and recurring needs. The actual need over five years is well over one point five billion in order to restore core services to pre-pandemic levels, have funds for ongoing pandemic response, meet new service needs and priorities, and set us up for ongoing fiscal stability. The American Rescue Plan funds will certainly have a positive impact on jump-starting Philadelphia's economy. But I think we can agree that it's not enough to simply recover. We need to rebuild equitably while ensuring growth that benefits all. Every industry has felt the brunt of the pandemic, and far too many of our businesses are still struggling to survive. So it's time to safely open, support business growth, and create economic security for all Philadelphians. I'm proud to report that this plan proposes no tax or fee increases. In fact, we'll help businesses and residents by providing tax relief. We'll enact wage tax reductions to the lowest level in fifty years and achieve the biggest wage tax rate cut in more than a decade with a deeper cut that was even included in the pre-pandemic plan for fiscal year twenty-two. This cut will help jump-start our economy and provide relief to workers. We'll also restore previously planned reductions to business tax rates, and the parking tax rate will return to pre-pandemic levels. I understand that people may want us to tax wealthy corporations or wealthy individuals. But as we're all aware, because of the uniformity clause of the Pennsylvania Constitution, we're required to have the same tax rate for our small businesses as our largest corporations, and the same wage tax rate for our essential workers and the highest earning workers. We must continue to work together to lobby Harrisburg for changes while continuing to improve what's within our control to support local business. To help our commercial corridors, we will provide three hundred thousand dollars in increased funding for storefront improvement and security grants, and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for PHL Taking Care of Business Corridor Cleaning Program. This follows a ten million dollar investment last year for services in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. This initiative championed by Councilmember Parker helps keep neighborhood corridors attractive places while providing accessible job opportunities. We'll also continue to find ways to make it easier to do business with the city by improving operations, investing in staff for a business response team, and helping get more minority businesses certified so they can compete for city and other contracts. We're committed to closing the opportunity gap experienced by minority immigrant and women-owned businesses that have been disproportionately impacted by COVID nineteen. For instance, we'll increase opportunities for entrepreneurs by engaging minority, women, and disabled-owned business in significant business with the city, investing in technical assistance and capacity building to help businesses grow, actively advancing public and private sector procurement reform, and by establishing, establishing an entrepreneur industry partnership. And to increase opportunities for small business, the city thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Green streamline the application process for small contracts. The Local Business Procurement Initiative raised the threshold requiring formal bids for city contracts from thirty-four thousand to seventy-five thousand and to one hundred thousand for local businesses. This will make it faster and easier for small business to compete for contracts. While we focus on business, we cannot forget our workforce. We include three million dollars to the Office of Workforce Development, two million dollars for a Transitional Jobs Program, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Color Me Back Same-Day Pay Program, almost one point five million dollars in adult education programs, and one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for digital equity initiatives. Together, these investments on our Black and Brown entrepreneurs and workforce better position Philadelphia to be more adaptable and agile to the future of work. It will help us stay ahead and reap the benefits from rapid changes of technology, e-commerce, remote work, and automation, which have been accelerated by the pandemic. Additionally, in the capital program, we've earmarked twenty million dollars towards economic development projects like the I ninety-five cap, Schuylkill River Development Corporation's Christian to Crescent, and East Market and Neighborhood Commercial Center Improvement Projects. Fortunately, the American Rescue Plan is not just helping relieve pressure on the city budget. It will do the same on household budgets and bring federally funded benefits to more than a million Philadelphians. The stimulus payments, the expansion of earned income tax credit, and the expanded child tax credit will provide critical cash support to Philadelphians who need it. We estimate that together the EITC and child tax credit will help move more than seventy-five thousand Philadelphians out of poverty this year and could cut the rate of children in deep poverty in Philadelphia this year by half. But to make the promise that these new benefits are reality, Philadelphians will have to take action and file tax returns, even if they have not done so in prior years or do not owe any taxes. So we are committed to connecting Philadelphians with the tax refunds they are entitled to. And we will be urging Congress to make these one-year changes permanent so that our families get out and stow a poverty for good. Over the last few years, we have worked to reverse old practices of balancing our budget based on fines and fees that mostly impact those who can least afford to pay. So I'm pleased to continue our elimination of the fines and fees that disproportionately burden Black and Brown Philadelphians. With our partners, we've eliminated bail fees, library fines, and now we will eliminate fees that burden families with individuals incarcerated in our prisons. These investments and more aim to spur economic recovery and growth, reduce poverty, and create inclusive and thriving neighborhoods, as we've been working to do over the last five years. These investments also complement the ones we've made with recovery grants we've received, which are allowing us to invest over one hundred and seventy million dollars to help people afford to stay in their homes, and another one hundred and forty million dollars to support nonprofits and small businesses impacted by the pandemic. We'll work hard to keep even more residents from losing their homes by investing hundreds of millions of dollars over five years for home repairs, rental assistance, eviction and mortgage diversion, support for people experiencing homelessness, and affordable housing development. I'm proud that Philadelphia is a national model receiving deserved attention for our work on housing and eviction and creating a rental assistance infrastructure ready to serve thousands of residents in need. I know this is a shared priority of Council President Clark, who launched the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative last year with the same mission. And because councilmembers Brooks, Gautier, and Gim came together with a bold package of legislation, the Emergency Housing Protection Act stabilized rents, created an eviction diversion program, and ensured that Philadelphians were able to stay in their homes during an uncertain time. I'm pleased to also increase funding for the arts by one point three five million dollars, including doubling the cultural fund. Not only is the arts community part of the fabric that makes our city great, but we also view the creative economy as a core sector for recovery, one whose reinvestment will pay dividends in the future. I am pleased to continue investments in our shared public spaces, including two point nine million dollars to restore five-day service, after-school programs, and other services at the libraries, and six point nine million dollars to restore recreation programs and reopen pools. Summer twenty twenty-one will be exciting and enriching, full of opportunities for learning and fun for youth of all ages. We have our school district partnership for summer academic and enrichment camps, play streets, parks, and rec summer camps, city out-of-school time summer camps in the community, as well as summer work-ready for older youth. We know that these types of activities are lifelines for our kids and believe that keeping children and youth engaged in dynamic summer experiences will help keep them safe and reduce community violence. We will also dedicate another ten million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two and fifty million dollars of the six-year capital program to the FDR Park Master Plan, which will support building and site improvements for this transformational project that's near and dear to Councilmember Johnson and myself. We know what the lakes meant to us as kids and what it has meant to residents during the pandemic, and we want to continue this legacy for our own kids. The capital program includes a historic three hundred and seventeen million dollars over six years in street paving and ADA curb ramps. With a hundred and thirty-two million in fiscal year twenty-two, this is the largest single-year investment in the city's history and will help workers, residents, and visitors access destinations reliably and safely, something I know that's important to Councilmember Thomas. Finally, to foster clean and safe communities, we'll invest sixty-two million dollars over five years to expand mechanical street sweeping with a focus on Black and Brown communities that are often hit the hardest by illegal dumping. And yes, like I mentioned during last year's budget address before the pandemic struck, we will be asking residents to move their cars to sweep our streets. We know now more than ever creating a thriving city truly depends on the health of all communities. We must work to eliminate health disparities and safeguard residents from threats that cause disease and injury. Therefore, we're investing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build on existing efforts to produce a plan to improve racial equity and health outcomes. This includes preventing chronic health conditions like diabetes and heart disease that disproportionately affect people of color. We have to ensure all, all children and families have access to nutritious foods, decrease use of addictive and toxic products, and access to safe green spaces. We'll also invest one million dollars for air management to improve air pollution oversight. Air pollution like that emitted by boilers and generators contributes to health problems like heart disease, asthma, lung disease, and respiratory tract infections. The concern is greatest amongst adults with other health problems, children and the elderly, and results in significant racial disparities. Because our fight against COVID nineteen is far from over, the plan sets aside fifty million dollars for COVID containment as part of a seventy-five million dollar reopening and recession reserve. This is in addition to over two hundred and twenty million in targeted grant funding we received to support our public health response to the pandemic. And in addition to over sixty million dollars that we are projecting to receive for the American Rescue Plan for vaccine activities and testing for the school district. We must continue to provide our Department of Public Health, Office of Emergency Management, and other agencies with the resources required to effectively combat COVID nineteen. To date, we have deployed over one hundred and forty million dollars for the public health and safety response to purchase PPE, establish a surge medical hospital, distribute meals to vulnerable populations across the city, stand-up hotels where people can safely quarantine and isolate, improve the safety of our shelter system, and much more. We must continue to prioritize addressing mental health, including concerns exacerbated by the pandemic through a system of care in which professional treatment, along with family, individual, and other resources, allow people to manage their own conditions and build self-resistance. In fact, across all the funds we administer, investments in the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services are more than one point six billion dollars in Philadelphia, more than double the police department's budget. We also make a strong commitment to fighting the opioid crisis. Significant progress has been made in saving lives by reducing overdose deaths. But since March of last year, COVID nineteen has prompted an increase in fatal drug overdoses, particularly in Black and Brown communities. The supply chains for help and support have been broken. Drug-related violence has soared. Equally important, this past year demonstrated a vital need to center racial and social equity in our opioid response. So the plan allocates four hundred thousand dollars for opioid treatment and five hundred thousand dollars for the opioid response unit, our multi-departmental effort to address the opioid epidemic. And later this month, the opioid response unit will unveil its new action plan, an overview of both how far Philadelphia has come and how far we still must go in the fight against opioid use disorder. I'm incredibly proud of the work being done, but these are just the first steps of many. Our efforts will not end until once again there is a healthy population and safe and thriving communities, untainted by the scourge of opioids. While containing the pandemic is among our most pressing priorities, we know that in some ways it pales in comparison to our other longstanding public health crisis, gun violence. In twenty twenty, Philadelphia lost four hundred and two people to gun violence, the most gun-related homicides in thirty years. With more than one hundred and forty people killed since the start of this year, twenty twenty-one is on track to be the worst year on record. Solutions must expand to match the scale of the problem. As a result, a total of eighteen point seven million dollars of additional funding in FY twenty-two on anti-violence efforts for a total of thirty-five point five million of investment. Over the life of the FY twenty-two through FY twenty-six five-year plan, this is an additional investment of seventy million dollars. This includes new investments such as one point three million to expand proven violence interruption programs like community crisis intervention programs and group violence intervention, two million dollars in the Transitional Jobs Program I mentioned earlier, five hundred thousand dollars for expansion of targeted community investment grants for violence prevention programs run by our community partners, and one point three five million for community improvements including graffiti cleanup, vacant lot remediation, clean and seal efforts, and improved lighting and visibility in key neighborhoods. We must stem the tide of gun violence while also addressing the systemic racism in policing that impacts Black and Brown Philadelphians. We've heard from the public and leaders in our communities that we must reimagine our approach to policing to create the safety all Philadelphians have a right to. To improve police response to people calling nine-one-one in behavioral health crises, the plan funds a six million dollar investment for improvements to the process of triaging nine-one-one calls and expansion of the pilot co-responder teams. Another seven point two million dollar expansion of behavioral health mobile crisis units and a crisis hotline will improve how emergency mental health services are delivered in crisis situations. Working with you all, and especially with the leadership of Councilmember Jones, we are launching a new one point nine million dollar citizen police oversight commission to restore public confidence, to review residents' complaints, and to create better police-community interactions. The plan also allocates seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for expanded training for the police department so our officers have the tools and skills to make good decisions when put in difficult situations. And another four hundred thousand dollars is earmarked for its early intervention system, a critical piece of the department's reform plan, which uses technology to help identify and reward positive police behaviors as well as intervene before an officer is in a situation that warrants formal redirection. To ensure the Philadelphia Police Department has the tools they need to solve crimes, we'll commit two million dollars for the upgrades in the Office of Forensic Science. And while we do everything we can alongside our criminal justice partners to reduce violence and hold violent offenders accountable, we must continue to call on the Pennsylvania Legislature to let us meet Philadelphia's unique needs. Until we address the availability and access to firearms, we will always be fighting an uphill battle. We need the ability to adopt proven gun policies that will save lives. We know from firsthand experience how invaluable local control can be. We saw it over the last year when it comes to our public education system. The city's close partnership and alignment with the school district during the pandemic are how we were able to step up to serve our students' most pressing needs over the last year. Our stark investment in education is the right approach for a long-term benefit of our city. Our economic growth and recovery depend on it. As in the past, we are investing in our future to improve the long-term outcomes of Philadelphians. The five-year plan envisions a return of teachers and students to classrooms with one point three eight billion dollars in funding for the school district of Philadelphia over the plan. This is on top of the one point three billion that the district will receive through the American Rescue Plan. And we'll invest a quarter of a billion dollars in the Community College of Philadelphia with fifty-four million dollars dedicated to the Octavius Cato Scholarship. This initiative will enable five thousand first-time students to attend college tuition-free and with the supports they need like food, books, and transportation stipends to successfully earn their degree. I had the opportunity to meet some of our Cato scholars earlier this year and cannot understate how inspiring they are. Students like Chelsea Hammond of Holmesburg, who previously struggled with addiction, is now on a path to becoming a paralegal. Or Daryl Claiborne of Germantown aims to provide a better life for his two sons by earning his associate's degree at CCP than continuing, continuing his nursing studies at Temple. These are just two examples of how this transformational program will improve Philadelphians' lives. On a macro level, we know that CCP is an economic driver for our city. Increasing the number of Philadelphians with two- and four-year degrees is a key component of our inclusive growth strategy. And we're even using the Cato Scholarship as a catalyst to advance our other equity and labor-related goals. For example, we'll work with CCP to implement a targeted recruitment plan for Black men, which are currently underrepresented in enrollment at the college, and we'll leverage the scholarship to increase our city's teachers of color. In partnership with our public schools and regional higher education institutions, we will create a seamless pipeline that will recruit, mentor, and retain emerging teachers of color to educate our children. In addition, PHL Pre-K will grow with seven hundred new slots and will add case manager support to community schools. We're committed to funding education from pre-K to college because it's the key to lifting Philadelphians out of poverty. It's the key to our long-term growth. And it's how we'll ultimately attract enterprise because we'll have the homegrown talent ready for the future of work. This plan represents our vision to move Philadelphia forward, but we also had to make some tough choices in the spirit of fiscal stability. But make no mistake, creating a diverse, efficient, and effective government remains our priority. We recognize the importance of modernizing service delivery, so we're investing five million dollars for the Operations Transformation Fund to redesign city operations and services to efficiently serve businesses and residents. And we'll invest in major tools needed to deliver city services, including IT systems, trash trucks, and major infrastructure investments. And across every investment in this plan, we will target our dollars and our policy change to reverse the impacts of structural racism and to make concrete improvements in the lives of Black and Brown Philadelphians in their safety, their health, and their economic well-being. Our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is helping departments complete racial equity assessment and action plans to reduce racial disparities across many indicators for success: education, criminal justice, jobs, housing, health, and more. I'm proud that we can avoid layoffs in fiscal year twenty-two, but we had to enact five percent budget cuts to most back office functions. to most back office functions. The fiscal year 2022 budget represents $5.25 billion general fund revenues and a $5.17 billion in general fund expenditures. This leaves us with a general fund balance of $109 million, which is 2% of revenues, far below national standards of 70% or two months of spending. Cities with that level of fund balance didn't have to make the painful choices we did in the face of the pandemic; they had reserves to draw on. Philadelphia must build back towards fiscal resilience to be able to support and serve residents through the next disruption, whatever that may be. Yes, I've covered a lot today, and there's even more in these budget documents. In hundreds of pages of numbers, prose, and charts, the operating budget, capital program, and five-year plan serve as blueprints for the city's reopening in the wake of the pandemic. This framework also represents what we heard from the community. This year, we established a multilingual online survey and held a dozen focus groups and meetings, which gave 13,000 people a way to share their recommendations on the city's revenue sources and spending decisions. This is just a start. We will make improvements on this engagement process year to year until it's truly representative and inclusive. I look forward to further engagement through hearings and discussions with all city council members as you fulfill your vital responsibility to debate and vote on the proposals in the coming weeks. As you review, please know that this budget was created with one guiding vision: that Philadelphians in every neighborhood can and must benefit from what I believe will be a strong recovery, every neighborhood. That vision is what guides me every single day and what keeps me going. It's a vision I wrote about last April in an open letter to all Philadelphians. I looked ahead to a time when the pandemic would be past history, and I predicted when that day comes, we will watch our children head off to school, play on the sidewalks, and even share snacks and hugs. And we'll know that when it mattered most, we stepped up, we cared for one another, and we did what was right, and we endured. A year later, I have seen firsthand how we have stepped up, how we have cared for each other, and how we have endured. And of course, we are not there yet. Restrictions remain in place, masks are still part of everyday life, there are many yet to be vaccinated, and residents are still tragically succumbing to the virus. But I see that day on the horizon, and I'm more confident than ever that with your continued hard work and dedication, we will get there soon. From crowded festivals on South Street and concerts at the Dell, to sellout crowds at the Phillies and tourists watching fireworks at Penn's Landing, to neighbors in North Philly gathering once again for our beloved block parties, to children rushing into classrooms to greet their teachers, not through a screen but with a hug. That vision soon enough will become reality. And all of this, all of what we knew and loved before the virus arrived, will be ours once again. Thank you and God bless.
Good morning. Okay, we're gonna get back. That concludes the mayor's speech. And we have our work to do. We will be sending out our budget schedule shortly, and we will start doing the business for the people of the city of Philadelphia with an extremely, as best possible, transparent process. We'll probably be doing a little bit differently this time around, having a little more remote public hearings, so to speak, but we'll talk to you all about that process as we move ahead. It's gonna time to tee up speeches, our speeches. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Okay, speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank the mayor for giving his vision of the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I want to thank the federal government for sending much-needed resources to the city of Philadelphia so that we can meet our obligation to the citizens of Philadelphia. I want to transition and say that a lot of that relief is going to go to the Philadelphia School District. A lot of that relief is going to help our children learn. I want to say that throughout my adult life, Mr. President and colleagues, I have fought discrimination, whether as a student activist at the Philadelphia Student Union or as the director of the Minority Business Enterprise Council, now OEO, and now, more recently, as a member of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, where we ferreted out discrimination throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I rise today out of concern, Mr. President, out of concern for a disparate impact that I believe developed around African-American minority-owned charter schools. I'm gonna give three definitions, and then I'm gonna stop talking. Disparate impact is whether or not you intend to be racist or intend to do harm to a group of people, but by your actions, by the results of those actions, it has a disparate disproportionate impact on a race or group of people. I cite that when I say that out of the 19% minority charter schools, 85% have been impacted through non-renewal. Nineteen percent of the population, 85% of the negative actions. And do I believe that maybe the school district is racist? Not necessarily. Do I believe that the impact has racist impact? Absolutely. Second definition that I'd like to bring forth is arbitrary and capricious. My lawyer colleague, Councilman Green, knows what this is, but I'll give you a common-sense definition. Arbitrary and capricious, when I'm sitting at the dinner table with all my kids and one of them gets to go out and do their thing after curfew, and the other does not get to do it, and they say, "Well, wait a minute, you just let my brother, my sister go out," and it might be because they have better grades, it may be because they clean their room, but there is no factual relationship to my decision. It is arbitrary and capricious unless I put the intent of why I made the decision. Often, too often, the decisions that are made to close charter schools, many of them in my district, and that's why I rise today, are arbitrary and capricious and do not have an apples-to-apples comparison of why you choose one school not to renew versus others other than possibly race. It bothers me to say it, but I'm gonna call it like I see it. And the final issue, you know, I used to tell my kids, you know, when I made those arbitrary and capricious rulings, I said, "Because I said so." But that doesn't get it when you are dealing with the education of our children, and I believe has risen to the occasion of a civil rights issue. The miseducation of our children leads to the school-to-prison pipeline and outcomes that impact them their entire lives. And to be able to have a full range of educational options is very important. So I raise these issues today out of caution, out of concern, and to say that me and my colleagues during this budget process will be looking and we will be watching, and we would recommend that you take no further action until we figure out whether or not this system is unfair to minorities. And so, without that transparency, I would be reluctant to want to support anything that has that kind of disparate impact among a group of individuals that are trying to educate our children. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to provide a level of brief remarks regarding this upcoming budget process. And I want to start off by thanking and giving credit to Mayor Jim Kinning for making core budget priorities out of gun violence and police reform. COVID-19 is not the only public crisis that has swept across our city over the past year. Thousands of Philadelphians have been shot at work, at school, at rec centers, at bus stops, and even in their homes. Hundreds have died. They include elders, pregnant women, and children. Just last night, a six-year-old was shot and his father was murdered in southwest Philadelphia. Our communities are bloody, our communities are traumatized, our communities feel hopeless. In recent weeks, I have been in the streets calling for Philadelphians to call to action. But as we ask our communities to step up, we in government must also step up. We must do for gun violence what we have done for COVID-19. We must be bolder and more aggressive. We must move quickly and decisively. We have agreed that this is a crisis, but our actions must match our words. For that reason, I will continue to be laser-focused during this budget season on gun violence, as I have been in the past. I will push to make sure that we put our money where our mouth is. We have at least $1.5 trillion in federal relief dollars on the table. Yes, our revenue is down, and yes, our economic recovery will be long, but as long as gun violence remains out of control, our economic recovery will be weak and slow. Gun violence prevention is not just a moral necessity, it is an economic necessity. We must invest now in a safer, more equitable city. We have a once-in-a-lifetime and this generation of opportunity to do so. This is my mission, as all of us have continuously addressed this issue as members of the city council, and look forward to working closely with all my council members, as well as your leadership, Council President, to make sure, we consistently make sure that gun violence and gun violence prevention is a key priority as we embark upon this upcoming budget discussion. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your continued presence in this issue. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to say happy Ramadan to Councilmember Jones and all of the Muslim brothers and sisters in the city of Philadelphia. We just have come through both Passover and Easter, and for those of us in the Christian faith, you know, Easter is a period of Lent, and you go through Lent for a period of time. Many of us fast, and we go through a period of challenge. And I think, when I think about Ramadan, Passover, and Easter, we as a globe have gone through a Lenten season. For well over a year, we've been dealing with this pandemic. And now it seems just like Ramadan comes to an end, Passover comes to an end, and Easter comes to an end, and we have this relief and joy. We're starting to get that same feeling now with vaccines now coming and being available for many more people, things are starting to open up, it's springtime, and we're getting the sense that we are coming out of this Lenten season. And we know last year, as a city, we had a very challenging budget process, where we had to fill a $750 million hole, and this year, we thought we were going to have to deal with a $450 million budget deficit on our own. But we all worked and used our platforms, and as president of Democratic Municipal Officials and also as president of the Pennsylvania Municipal League, I want to thank all my colleagues and council for using your platform to push for the passage of the American Rescue Plan. And this is something that's going to benefit cities all around this nation. And here in the city of Philadelphia, we're going to receive $1.4 billion, $700 million in a few weeks, and then another $700 million next year, which must be spent by the end of 2024. So with this new infusion, and I've been around city council for a little while, I don't think I've seen in my time in this building this type of infusion of new money. So with that, I was, you know, being very hopeful for today's budget address from the mayor. I want to thank the mayor for his remarks and laying out a lot of information and dollars regarding his perspective and his vision for our city. But I think about what Councilmember Johnson said and think about what we've been going through for the past year, the mayor's vision is a good start, but I'm gonna say what I think all of us are thinking, and I think many people around the city are thinking: we need a bolder vision on how we're going to use these dollars. And when I think about vision, I have to reflect on a conversation we had last week in city council, where we were talking about the Philadelphia movie Concrete Cowboy. And hopefully many of us had a chance to watch this film either over Easter or through Passover, or as now, those of our Muslim brethren are going through, or and sisters are going through Ramadan. And in that film, I'm not gonna focus on the main character, but there was a character in that film, and his name was Smush. And this is a young man that I think really represents a lot of young people here in the city of Philadelphia. Unfortunately, he got cut off in the drug game and lost his life to gun violence. But what we learned in the movie, that Smush had a vision for a better day. He was saving his money from the drug game to get into a legitimate business opportunity and use that as seed capital. We also know that he at one point was very involved with the Fletcher Street Cowboys, but somehow got pulled away from that positive activity into a negative activity, which was the drug game, and thinking that was the only way he could produce dollars and revenue to do a legitimate business and build up that seed capital. And so, when we think about this $1.4 billion coming into the city of Philadelphia, and I think the mayor provided a good start, but we've got to have a much bolder thought process and bolder vision for the city of Philadelphia. In the budget, the mayor talks about, you know, targeted investment in community grants, and, you know, we've got to do things differently. How can we spend much more money for some of the grassroots, community-based organizations that are helping young people like Smush not get involved in the gang activity? How can we spend more money, not just on certification, and I know the mayor talked a lot about different investments for minority businesses, but how do we help those businesses to truly grow? And so, young people in our city like Smush can see they don't have to get in the gang activity to raise seed capital to start a business. They can see entrepreneurs in our city, black and brown entrepreneurs, who are growing their businesses and being successful. So we need to have a bolder vision for our city. And when we think about the fact that we had 499 homicides last year, we're on a pace that is going to clearly eclipse that this year, the fact that 6% of the businesses in the city with employees are owned by African-Americans, only 4% of the businesses with employees are owned by our Latin brothers and sisters, we got to do something different. And so, I need to challenge myself, I think we all need to challenge ourselves and also challenge the mayor to work together to have a bolder vision for our city. I think today's address was a good start. We have a lot of work to do. I think we have a sense that we need to do more with this, what I would say is once-in-a-lifetime investment of $1.4 billion into our local economy. So I'm gonna have to press myself to do more. I think we're all gonna press ourselves to do more and also work with the administration to do more, to have a bolder vision for our city. Because we don't want to be in a situation, come 2025 or 2026, and we say, "What happened to that $1.4 billion? Did we really make investments to really take that vision that the mayor laid out and make it even bolder for the future of our city so we don't have more young people like the characters Smush and Concrete Cowboys lose their life to gun violence?" Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I join you, Mr. President, in your comments and noting that I anxiously await the opportunity for us to be engaged in our budget process. Thank the mayor for his introduction today, summary of where he has proposed we as a city make investments, and I look forward to us working, you know, in partnership with the administration to negotiate, to negotiate, Mr. President, where those investments will be, and that's the process that we go through. But in addition to that, Mr. President, I wanted to just, one, from a scheduling perspective, I needed to give some updates, because we've been getting the calls in my office, and I want to make sure the public is clear. Folks know that last week, I introduced a Folks know that last week I introduced a resolution that was unanimously passed by this council authorizing the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings examining the decision to permanently move share sales online and to further explore the ramifications and any unintended consequences that may arise from this decision. During that meeting, I let folks know that the hearing for the resolution in the Law and Government Committee was scheduled for April the 21st at 1:00 and to reach out to my office if they were interested in testifying. Several of you members of the public did, and we want to say thank you. But I do need to let you know that we have a time change. I want to let people know that the hearing has been pushed back by 24 hours to Thursday, April 22nd at 1:00 p.m. Again, that's Thursday, April 22nd at 1:00 p.m. If you look at council's calendar on our website, it will look to you like Law and Government is beginning on April 21st at 10:00 a.m. And our plan is to hear two bills during that morning, but we're going to recess and the hearing until April 22nd after we finish with those bills to 1:00 p.m. And then that's when we will have our hearing on the share of sales. If you are still interested in testifying at the hearing, again, please reach out to our office at 215-686-3454. Again, that's 215-686-3454. The next scheduling issue, Mr. President, is that another one of my resolutions is being heard in the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless on Monday, April 26th at 10:00 a.m. Now, that hearing is going to examine the race gap in home appraisals and its impact on homeownership and wealth accumulation here in Philadelphia. The hearing is going to look at how race impacts home appraisals from three particular angles. The first is how the race of the homeowner impacts the appraisal. The second is how the overall race of the neighborhood impacts the appraisal and the health of the neighborhood impacts the appraisal. And finally, how the race of the appraiser actually impacts the appraisal. And if you are, again, interested in testifying at that hearing, I want you to reach out to my office again at 215-686-3454. Finally, Mr. President, I want to say to members of the Ninth District who participated with me in a conversation yesterday about what we should be focusing on when we start negotiations during this budget process, I want to say to them that I heard you loud and clear that when we are talking about tax cuts in any kind, your message to me was Sherrell, those tax cuts need to be able to bring about measurable new net jobs or either bringing people back to work who are no longer working, like those low-wage workers who've been in our parking industry. And how do we get people back traveling into the city? So any tax cut being proposed is going to have to, Mr. President, you know, have to do with bringing people back to work. And if you can't tangibly measure that for me, you know, we'll have some issues during that discussion. In addition to that, our existing housing stock, while we hear a lot of discussion and it is a major issue in our city, I will continue, Mr. President, you know, to remain laser focused on how we are being as innovative as we possibly can to do what you described is preserving the most affordable housing that we have. And is that the building of new? No, it's preserving and modernizing our existing housing stock. So we're going to be very focused on that. In addition, it's ownership, homeownership, homeownership. You know, housing is a human right and we want to make sure that every Philadelphian, no matter their race, class, socioeconomic status, or zip code, has access to housing. But I will remain unapologetic in saying that ownership, ownership is the path to self-sufficiency and it's the way people like my grandparents, you know, made it to the working class by owning the property that they moved to. And that was their first home. So I want to say thank you to Mr. President, you and the rest of my colleagues. And I really look forward to us having a conversation about how we put Philadelphians on a path to self-sufficiency and not allow those people who have simply attempted us, attempted to encourage us to focus in one particular area. You know, we can walk and chew gum at the same time and put people on a path to self-sufficiency. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. And like many of my colleagues, I want to thank the mayor for the budget address today. It's a process that we know is going to be very tedious and very engaging over the next several weeks, really a couple of months. But I do want to echo the sentiments of some of my colleagues. I'll start with Councilmember Johnson. I agree with Councilmember Johnson when he talks about this issue of gun violence and also agree with Councilmember Green when he talks about us needing to be bolder and to take things a step further. And I think, again, a lot of my colleagues on council, I look forward to working with you as we engage this issue. But I do want to reference something that Councilmember Jones talked about earlier. And what he talked about around black institutions, I think it's an important issue that's not getting the attention that it deserved. A little while back, we introduced a resolution to hold hearings around this issue and some of the practices. And since that resolution has been introduced, we've been actively working, along with the Chair of the Education Committee, Councilmember Sanchez, to try our best to put us in a position to be able to address this issue. And unfortunately, right now, I just don't feel like we're trending in a direction, you know, and I'm not going to communicate it as eloquently as Councilmember Jones did, but I just don't feel like we're trending in a direction where we're being consistent in saying that these, I guess you could say, bad practices have happened in the past, but then simultaneously keeping those same measures in place, we're making, I guess what you could say, executive decisions, to paraphrase what Councilmember Jones talked about, as it relates to how we operate and how we decide. Ended up with 85% of those institutions that have been closed by this city, all being black and brown-led institutions. So I'm going to continue to raise the bells and whistles when it comes to this particular issue because when we're talking about the racial disparities that exist, whether we're talking about it in the form of criminal justice reform like we spoke about earlier, whether we're talking about it in the form of jobs and equity as far as what Councilmember Parker talked about earlier, or if we're talking about it through the lens of education, you know, we have to be consistent in our advocacy. And I think right now, we're seeing some levels of inconsistency. It's very difficult to continue to scream various phrases and to say we want to advocate for people of color, but then at the same time, not do things that are within our control to be able to be reflective of that same feeling. So thank you, Councilmember Jones, for your support, for highlighting this issue. I know that some of the institutions that are in question are in your district and some of the institutions that have been closed are in your district. And I look forward to continuing engaging all parties as we figure out what are we going to do about this problem that's disproportionately impacting black people in Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the opportunity to give remarks.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduced a resolution calling on the National Collegiate Athletic Association to reevaluate its policies and practices to support gender equity in sports. A few weeks ago, Sedona Prince, an Oregon women's basketball forward, posted a video exposing the evident differences in weight training facilities between the men's and women's basketball teams competing in the NCAA championships. Not only was the women's weight room essentially empty of all equipment, but the women's teams also received significantly less March Madness branding, food options, COVID-19 testing, media coverage, swag bags, and worse playing conditions. These differences in resources between the men's and women's team were not addressed by the NCAA until Sedona Prince's video caught the attention of millions of people and well-known NBA players. Only then did the NCAA apologize and publicly work towards gender equity. In an interview on Monday, Prince emphasized the importance of supporting other student athletes and joining together as a united front against gender inequality. While building a weight room for the women's teams was a step for the NCAA, Prince mentioned that she wanted to ensure that gender inequities did not happen again. These recent events are not new to the NCAA and are fact deeply ingrained in basketball culture. In 2013, the Division One Basketball Women's White Paper was compiled by Al Val Ackerman reporting gender disparity concerns and recommendations about women's basketball in the NCAA. Unfortunately, the NCAA failed to address any of those concerns and to this day leaves the Women's Basketball Coaches Association, a group focused on Title IX, out of important decisions. This week, the NCAA again presented poor playing conditions and media coverage of its Women's Volleyball Championship Tournament that is set to take place this week. ESPN originally planned one streaming matches in silence without play-by-play announcers or analysts, which downplays the importance of the national tournament and the efforts of the athletes. Only after many coaches criticized this setup did ESPN change their plans to broadcast the first two rounds of the tournament. The NCAA also provided practice courts placed over cement flooring, which is very high risk for athletes and is likely to cause injury. Additionally, COVID-19 protocols closed all locker rooms, taking away a private space for female athletes to change in uniform after warmups. For these issues to take place a month after the women's basketball gender disparity issues came to light means that the NCAA has not dedicated enough time into reevaluating their role in gender inequality and maximizing the importance of women in sports. I am calling on the NCAA to reevaluate its deep-rooted practices of gender inequality and to take more steps towards gender equity in all sports and divisions. These issues have been left unaddressed for far too long and it is necessary to ensure fair treatment among women and men in sports. And I am hopeful that they will hear us as a region in this country that has a significant number of universities that vie competitively for the spots during the different tournaments, including Drexel University and Temple and Penn and Villanova and so many others who are very active with the NCAA. We certainly hope they will hear us on that. And this will not be the last that we speak on this particular issue. I also wanted to just take a moment out on the Goldman Sachs 1 Million Black Women Initiative. And that's another resolution that I introduced today. Mr. President, recognizing 1 Million Black Women Initiative launched by Goldman Sachs, black women's organizations, and other partners to invest in black women and advance racial equity and economic opportunity. Black women are reported to face a 90% wealth gap, are less likely to own or inherit high-return assets, are underbanked, and have poorer health and shorter lives than those of white women. By investing in black women and reducing the earnings gap, it is predicted that black women can create 1.2 to 1.7 million jobs in the United States. Additionally, black women would help increase the GDP of the U.S. by 300 to 450 billion dollars. This initiative commits $10 billion in direct investment capital and an additional $100 million in philanthropic support to address the gender and racial biases black women have historically faced. The initiative aims to ultimately narrow opportunity gaps and positively impact the lives of at least 1 million black women by 2030. We must continue to support initiatives like this and Black Girl Freedom Week, an initiative celebrated in February that called for a $1 billion investment in black girls and their futures. And that will serve black women and transform communities across our country. And so I thank you for your time today, for everyone listening. But I really felt very strongly that these women's issues really needed to be highlighted and brought up, and they won't be the last that I speak on these issues. Thank you so much to my colleagues and to you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm sure it won't be the last time.
Maybe on City Council Sports Talk, we'll hear something about women's.
I'm waiting.
Women's volleyball.
We have a slot. We have a slot. It will be filled, believe me. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to join the voices of Councilmember Miata Johnson, Councilmember Green, and my other colleagues in support of the gun violence, more investment, and support of being bolder. And, you know, Winston Churchill had a great quote, "Never waste a good crisis." And I think we do need to be more strategic, bolder. This is a tremendous opportunity, it'll probably be once in our lifetime, to change the direction of this city. Now, I'm going to point to one statistic that's a fact. It's in the Pew Report that came out recently. And it shows the city's projected general fund budget shortfalls for 2021 and compares Philadelphia to about 10 other cities. The only city that had a bigger shortfall in Philadelphia was Detroit. 17% shortfall in Detroit, 14.7% shortfall in Philadelphia. Baltimore was 5.4, Boston was 1.9, Kansas City was 9.2, and everyone else was far lower than Philadelphia. To me, this indicates that what we've been doing in the past has not worked really well. And we need to dramatically change what we should be doing going through the economy and allowing more equity across the board. It's just not working. Many of my colleagues and I heard many different ideas this week in the fiscal committee meeting, it was, I think it was two days ago, where we heard about how black and brown entrepreneurs, yes, they're getting jobs, but they're not creating wealth. And that is so important. So those are just some of the things I wanted to talk about. And I also wanted to just briefly mention, I'm going to talk about it next week. I wanted to extend, I want to do this on behalf of all my colleagues and the administration, our deepest sympathies to the Rubin family, Ron Rubin, who passed away earlier this week. He's a Philadelphia icon, 89 years old. He did the gallery, he did the Bellevue, he was involved with Mellon Bank Center. His imprint was all over the city, including he was the founder of the Center City District. And we'll talk more about it next week. I just did not want this moment to go by without recognizing that and extending our condolences to his family and friends. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much. It appears that that concludes the speeches. Just real quick, I want to say that I know we all have our vision of the future of the city of Philadelphia. And we were in a very, very aggressive process of laying it out and hopefully implementing it in this thing called COVID-19, putting abrupt stop on that. But the reality is, it's time to recover. It's time to move forward. And we will be adopting all of those great ideas and vision that City Council has had over a number of years. So we look forward to our budget process and I appreciate you all so much for your continued due diligence and your commitment to the city. So with that, I'm going to recognize Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's removed the second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, April 22nd, 2021, 10:00 a.m. All if they've indicated by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Thank you.